You are up.
Morning. The Bannock County Commissioners are in session Thursday, August 21st, and we get to start off with the Board of Ambulance District. So come on up.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept the amended agenda.
Oh, that's right.
And go into this Board of Ambulance.
Thank you both for reading the agenda more closely than me. We have a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. I am Dean Bullock with the Pocatello Fire Department. The Bannock County Ambulance District is requesting approval from the Commission to purchase a Zolzi Vent portable ventilator. This ventilator will be placed on the new ambulance that we will take delivery of at the end of this year. We did have approval to buy four of the vents. We have purchased three of those so far and are asking for approval to purchase the fourth. This will keep us within our budget constraints and we are requesting to use $24,052.70 of the unexpended FY '25 capital outlay.
Questions?
No. We budgeted for it. We planned on it.
Yeah. Okay. So I would entertain a motion then.
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve the expenditure of $24,052.70 for this ventilator.
Yep, the Zolzi ventilator. Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. You didn't get to talk.
I know. He didn't even need me. I'm just here in case.
That's why them bullocks are. They won't lie to anybody else.
Way to be there for support.
I would prefer she.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we go out of the Board of Ambulance and back into the Board of County Commissioners.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Melissa, right on time.
Good morning. Melissa Hartman with Veteran Services. And I'm here today to talk about getting our permit signed for our 9/11 event on the courthouse front lawn. I believe you guys have that. I've visited with Matthew and it sounds like you guys probably have that insurance in front of you at this time, too.
We do. We do. Matthew, you want to talk about that real quick?
I think she should be good. We got a certificate issued. We don't place additional insurance on our policy, but we've included an explanatory letter from ICrimp. And Pocatello has ICrimp, too, so I don't think it'll be a problem.
So the contract required insurance that covered them, is that what, if I understood that correctly?
It just requires proof of insurance and it had asked for, to place them as an additional insurer, but we typically don't do that just because of statute.
Yeah. And again, they should understand they have the same insurance company.
Exactly. So, but she should be good to go.
How's preparation going?
Good. So we've got Highland High School's going to come and they're going to do the band again like they've done every year. Judge Carnaroli is on board to do the events as they unfolded, so that's going to be great. We've had one hiccup this year and that is with the reduction in ROTC out of ISU, so I don't know if you guys have heard that, but the ROTC program at ISU has been canceled.
Oh, really?
Yep. So we are losing that vital program here in Pocatello, which is super sad, but with it means that the students that are enrolled right now, there's very few of them left and they won't be enrolling new ones. So our honor guard that we've always relied on for military honor guard from those ROTC students unfortunately has gone. So we've talked to our local law enforcement. There used to be, and apparently there still is, a joint honor guard for law enforcement and so I've been in touch with Lieutenant Barchie and we're going to get that all squared away and get everything set up, hopefully. So, yeah. Would one of you guys like to emcee?
Yeah, I should be around. I'll be there again.
All right.
I'll double check my schedule and let you know if it's different, but yeah, plan on it unless I tell you different.
Great. And then it'll be the same, it'll be the same process as we've done in the past. We'll, we'll put up no parking signs in front of the courthouse probably by about 3:00, not super early. I mean, I don't think it's necessary for us to do that super early, especially with the 30-minute parking.
Right.
So we'll set those out in that parking spot about 3:00 and then we'll move them out about 5:00, so it's down to one lane. And then right at 5:30, because we'll have all the law enforcement practically in Pocatello there, they'll just take over and close out that second lane and for about, we will close both lanes for about 20 minutes, 30 minutes, just like we normally do. And then we'll open them back up, open up one lane back up as soon as possible. We're inviting the community and we're inviting you also to come and join us at the Memorial Building, so the Veterans Memorial Building. The bottom floor of it is open again, so that's fantastic news. So it will be business as usual for the bottom portion of the building. So you're all invited to come back over for a dinner there afterwards, mainly because 9/11 was so tragic, but what was beautiful was 9/12, right? The 12th was fantastic and that's what I, I'd like our community, and I think our community does focus on what happened September 12th, because that's what our community is really about.
Good. All right. Thank you. Matthew, I don't see a place to sign on this for us, so you just need a motion approving this. What do you need?
I've already issued the certificate, so yes, if you'd like to approve.
Okay.
Us issuing the insurance according to the parade application requirements or approve the parade application, I think that will conclude it all.
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve the agreement in the parade application with the City of Pocatello for the 9/11.
Thank you.
Make a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks, guys. All right. Yep. Have a good day.
Fair. Fair and friends. Come on up. We asked the fair board to come today and report on the fair and the success they had and what worked well and what didn't work well. And then a further discussion on how we intend to use the new building down there, talk about fees for that. So with that, we'll turn the time over to the chairperson.
Did you want us to say who we were?
Yeah.
Okay. Dylan Moser-Evans, I am Chair of the Fair Board.
Cody Mallard, Fair Board.
Alex Howser, grounds coordinator.
Nikki Ennis, extension educator.
Jamie Pearson, Fair Board Coordinator.
All right.
I felt like our fair this year was by far the largest attendance, smoother that it went all around in the last five, six years that I've been back, the absolute very best. We were really excited to see all of the things that went positively and honestly, there wasn't anything that I can think of that we really needed to fix that didn't go well, which is good.
Yeah.
No fires.
What's that? The fire. Yeah. We were really blessed on that, though.
Yeah.
And thankfully, we had the water right there so that we could hook up those camper hoses. And we even had entertainment that ran from their entertaining on the free stage, ran over there to help hook up hoses and to spray things down, which I thought was really cool. So 4-H parents and everybody got involved. So that was very good.
Good. Nikki, you want to talk about the 4-H side of things?
Yeah, we've had our biggest year. We had over 200 youth involved in 4-H in the community club program. We also have our outreach, too, which reaches other youth in the community. And then our sale went really well this year. We had huge community support. From what our auctioneer said, it's probably one of the best sales in eastern Idaho. We did over $400,000 at the sale. Our, all of our numbers are up for animals and our family consumer science projects, so we're expecting more growth. We have new clubs and more interest in 4-H, so it's just, it keeps growing. And one of the things that we're running into is space for animals. So, I mean, the sheep barn, that was amazing. We were able to accommodate the sheep and goats in there this year, but I think it's going to keep growing. And the beef, we actually had to move one of the horse sites out of the barn to put beef. So we actually had two, one and a half barns of beef this year. Normally, we're just in one beef barn. So I think the issue that we're going to run into is space and having the stalls and room for all the animals. The poultry barn was completely full, so we're looking into getting new pens for the poultry. I think the other thing is our schedule. We're going to work with the fair board and, because our shows are going longer, which is a good thing, we have a lot more kids, and so we're just going to work together and figure out how to coordinate that so it runs smooth.
Cool. Cody, what about you?
I thought the fair was good. Sales is kind of my baby, so I was glad it went really good. A lot of community support. Lots of happy kids. It was sad, too, but they'll be happier when they see their check.
Right. Cool. Jamie?
I think everything went well. Our sponsorship's up. We're up over, almost to $33,000 this year in sponsorship. So that's up about $5,000. Our ticket sales were up over, every single night we were up. So we're over $2,000 over on ticket sales, too. So vendors were a little bit down, but Grace had their fair the same week, so they had to choose if they wanted to be. And a lot of the ones that we do usually have come from that Grace area, so they stayed.
Powhatan was same week, too.
Yeah, Powhatan, too. So we're up on all of those except for vendors. And we weren't really down that much. We were down less than $1,000 on vendors, so. There were a lot of vendors that pulled in. We even had two sponsors that came to the kids rodeo Monday night and walked up and gave us checks Tuesday and said, "We want our banner in the arena."
Cool.
So to have on-the-spot sponsors is good, for people that just came to attend.
Very good. Anything else from you, from your perspective?
It was great, you know. It was a long week, but yeah, the attendance was, from Monday to the Saturday, was, the stands were full through all the events. And just going through there and kind of keeping everything cleaned and I can just tell that there's a lot more people. There was way more people this year than, the attendance was great. And then the feedback of right now being there cleaning up and stuff, everybody thought it was great, too. Same thing, like never seen a stand so as full as it was all week long. The people stayed there. They loved the new events that we had, the kids rodeo. Even with the animals of 4-H, it was just driving through there, it's like there's way more people this year, which is great. And coming in and actually the support and the sponsors, there's a lot more sponsors that we advantage of taking down this year. So I think it was a great success that we, our goal was to do that, so.
Cool. So which evening event was the most popular? Was it the motorcycles, the kids rodeo?
Every one of them drew a different crowd, but I will tell you that that Monday night Kids Ranch Rodeo was such a blast and it was such a perfect way to start the fair out.
Yeah. Yeah, that was pretty cool. That was fun.
Who come up with that?
Zach.
That's what I thought.
And he was planning on being here, but he had a NICU call, so he couldn't attend today.
Thought it was him, but that, I haven't seen the grandstands that full on Monday night.
In a long time, huh?
Ever.
Yeah.
Before, there wasn't any grandstands.
Yeah.
Now that there are grandstands, I've never seen it that full before.
That was cool. Cool.
I think that kind of set the tone for the whole week. I think it made everybody excited, because a lot of those people that were there Monday night, they all came back for another event, so.
We thought it was just because of the potato bar.
Maybe it was.
You know, I think it's interesting, as I listen to all of you, that it was running concurrently with Grace, their fair, but you also competed against some activity here in Pocatello up at, the concerts.
There was two concerts and there was two big days on Saturday.
Yeah, so with that competition and still being able to have the crowd we have increased, I thought was remarkable, because all those can be scary by themselves to try to compete against that. So well done, well done. So how many potatoes did you bake?
So we baked 700 potatoes, I think 700 or 600. Anyway, usually we've always ended up with like two, three, four boxes left. We had one box left, so we went through a ton of potatoes.
Literally a ton.
We ran, yeah. We ran out of butter, we ran out of cheese, I mean, we've never ran out of everything.
Right.
We ran out of forks.
Yeah.
We ran into the Lions Club booth. They were good.
Well, nice. Any other questions about the fair?
Thank you. The new facility, how'd it work out?
Great. I thought it was good. Yeah, I thought it was really good. It was a little bit challenging. Space-wise, when we had to use all tables, but we'll work on something. We've talked about the shelves and some different things that we'll work on, so maybe it'll free up a little bit more space, make it flow a little bit better, because everything was just on flat tables that people were walking around. But other than that, I, everybody was impressed with it. It was really nice. Dan did a great job.
As I went through there, I seen more people wandering through that than I have in the past also.
Yeah.
It was good to see. But it worked out administratively for you?
Yeah, it was good.
Okay. Dan, why don't you come on up and let's talk about how we're going to use the building going forward and the fee schedule that you guys have got proposals for us today.
Dan, County Facilities Director. I just had a couple things just to talk about moving forward, just continuing to improve the building. Would love to add sidewalks at some point, but as we talked about, it's a little bit tough where the City of Downey doesn't have a sidewalk to tie it into. That's something I would love to work on. The rideaway, I think we need to maybe finalize that so we can make sure we're not building a sidewalk through the rideaway. I'd like to get rid of that. That would be helpful. The costs, you know, to run the building, probably should talk about, you know, little things like my department being able to spend money there and continue improving, but paying, you know, if we want to pay for mowing, the annual inspections, I would like to pay for those. Maintenance, I'd like to continue to help with that. Just things to continue to improve the building and continue to maintain the building, just decisions that you guys should probably make and just make sure Christie's okay with me spending some time there, spending some money there. Things for you guys to consider.
Okay.
The only thing that we've heard from the community is the ADA accessibility that we've talked to Dan a little bit about, because they wanted a sidewalk from the front door down, but it goes to a dirt parking spot. I mean, there's not a sidewalk that it actually ties into, so, but we have had a few complaints about that. That's the only thing that we've heard negative about the building.
Yeah, and we're aware of that, but it goes back to the sidewalk issue that Dan talked about. So we're going to have to bring the City of Downey in and have a conversation and see what we can do to remedy some of that, because it is important to have an ADA accessible.
They didn't complain just about the building. They complained about trying to get from the handicap parking, which is behind the Lions Club, the concession there to get into the arena. And I talked to Chrissy a little bit. We did at one point, a long time ago, we had a grant. Yes, yeah. But we ended up not doing anything with it because we ran into a problem, because the grant was from the arena over to the old building, but the building, but it ran across city property, too. So we ran into a snafu and didn't, didn't follow up with it because we couldn't get all the players on board. So we lost the grant. So I don't know if there's an opportunity there to maybe work with the city, because it went from the arena in front of the ticket booth all the way down along the side of the baseball diamond there, like right between the vendors, and then to the building, which would be great.
Yeah. Well, that's part of our discussion with City of Downey, how we can partner on that and do something different, so.
And talking about your growth and stuff, we want to talk to the City of Downey and maybe get rid of the baseball field, build in a new baseball field and that would be utilized as fair property. That's in the works, or we're talking about it.
That's the direction we like to travel.
So we could utilize that and have that at the fairgrounds.
Okay, so let's talk about what your thoughts are on exhibit hall uses. You've got exhibit hall rental, the kitchen area and a conference room. What do we want to do about the community use for like pickleball and things like that? What are your thoughts? Dan, do you have?
I think, as you guys go through it, I think we will need to figure out access controls. We could control that from the courthouse, or we could do it otherwise through these guys. But I keyed it to be very simple. I didn't want to spend money on it until we decided how you're going to use it. But I think key fobs could be utilized or keypad or keying that building up separately, whether you rented just the exhibit hall or just the conference room or just the kitchen. But as of right now, it's super basic and needs your direction to, so we can work on that and get it set up in the work best.
Okay. What are you guys hearing from the community? What does the community need or want?
I think they want access. They haven't shared a whole lot because it was all so new to us, you know, getting it like two days before. And then the craziness of the fair, because they were just saying how much they enjoyed having it, at least for the fair. So as far as them coming to me to do things, there wasn't, I didn't have anybody.
We have people calling already wanting pickleball.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I've had one request for a wedding and one request for a family Thanksgiving dinner. And we just tell them we have to wait till we, we know what the steps are.
And we currently don't have a fee for general use.
Correct.
That's not within these proposals, so if there's going to be a pickleball use, you'll have to figure out.
Add that to this.
Well, we'll have to have a new public hearing because this has already been published. So we'll have to go through the new process for that.
This has been published with the new?
It was published and the public hearing is set for the 26th, right after the budget hearing. But the other thing is, this does also not include a deposit, so I don't know if we're going to require a deposit.
Cleaning deposit tied in.
And then also, at some point, we need to work through and get an inventory and figure out how that's going to work as well.
Correct. Correct. Do all the tables and chairs have stickers on them down there yet, or?
They do not.
They do not? Okay.
We don't necessarily need stickers on them. We just need counts, but we also need counts of what's in the kitchen, all of that.
So my question, if we rent it out and lease it out and stuff, about our insurance?
Matthew Phillips, HR and Risk Management Director. I have talked to the underwriter at I-Crimp a little bit about it. He didn't feel like there was any more risk compared to what we do at all, our other facilities, right? We have people playing soccer and football and everything. So he didn't feel like any ancillary coverage was necessary. However, you know, if we do want to require, you know, kind of like the Event Center does for larger groups, requires a certificate of insurance for a certain amount of coverage, I wouldn't be opposed to that. And then the other thing is, you know, alcohol use probably needs to be discussed. And their recommendation was that if there was anything like that allowed, and again, that's your decision, that it be catered.
And that's apparently how we handle the Event Center, is they came to our office and they fill out a catering permit. It's $20 per day. That gives us the ability to notify the Sheriff's Office that the event is going to occur and also the Commission has to sign off on it. And then that would just be part of the insurance when they fill out the application.
Now, another thing they did mention is they didn't think, they weren't opposed to us if we did want to come up with a waiver as well. I mean, I'd have to work with legal on that. I haven't done that yet, but, so for example, with the pickleball use, whether we charge a fee for that or not, it might be good to grab a waiver before people start doing super athletic stuff in there. But not necessarily requirement, just a suggestion, so.
We do have an indoor arena contract that they can sign up for daily, monthly, six month or yearly, that we could probably utilize that same format, because there's different fees for different, the indoor arena. And Alex just puts in a code form and it expires in either 30 days or six months or.
So I don't want a keypad, simply because you'd have to change the code all the time, every time somebody used it. I like the idea of a fob that we, it identifies who has that fob, who utilizes it, what time and everything else. Plus, we have the cameras in there that security here have access to, correct?
Correct.
So I just, the keypad, to me, we'd be down there changing the numbers all the time. And then with master keys and everything like that, whoever gets them assigned, that's who they're assigned to. You don't loan them out. You don't give them to anybody else. I mean, that's who's responsible for them. I've witnessed in the LDS church where they used to have keys and finally, everybody in the community has a key. And we need to keep control of this facility.
So if we do a key fob, again, this is just things to think about. How would we go about handing out the key fob, collecting the key fob?
We have all the keys to give back to Dan that he gave us.
If they, whoever's going to sign, having sign the paperwork and everything else to come in, it should have control of the fee, the key fob, in my opinion. If that's Jamie, if they go through her and, I mean, you're going to have to keep a schedule if we're not including this up at the Event Center, which is fine with me, if we're going to, you know, you're going to be caretaker of the building, basically, in my opinion. What's your feelings?
So are they going to have the contracts go through the Fair Board, me and the Fair Board, or is, are they going to be going through the Commission?
Well, and that's, that's another conversation. And this is from Jonathan. I just, I didn't make a bunch of copies, but it kind of talks about roles and responsibilities and who has responsibility for the building. I mean, all facilities down there are county property. So it's the same, honestly, as you guys dealing with the people that come and use the arena. I mean, that's the way I'm kind of looking at it.
If it's a full-fee rental, you guys should be able to take care of that. That's how we have it up there. But if you're going to waive fees or do a reduction in fees, then that has to come before us. Any thoughts?
Too many of them. My first reaction is, let's don't hurry. We've still got a lot of, a lot of issues. Even though the community wants to all of a sudden now step in and be a part of that, I'm sure there's some things we don't know yet. I mean, the security, who's going to do that? And even worried a little bit about if we have to collect cleaning deposits, that affects accounting, because you've got funds coming in, they have to be held.
Held.
And then dispersed back out.
Which we did not measure for.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of balls, I think, being juggled right now. And I think even our relationship with the City of Downey, which is good, I'm sure we, I don't want to turn this over to a new senior center, new community center for them without proper thought and control through that. Because when you open that up, even like I say, I appreciate the family that wants to use it as a Thanksgiving party, and I don't blame them, but on the other hand, have we addressed all the issues that we need to address? So I think we need to move forward fairly cautiously. Not that we can't do it, but I don't think that decision's going to be made today just because of all the things. One thing that I, and I'll just throw that out, there are probably very few sidewalks in the City of Downey. To add a sidewalk, I don't think you're ever going to get the City of Downey to come, but I would almost, for our building, I'd just as soon have put in our own sidewalk, because we're the ones going to be, they're pulling up, if we don't put a sidewalk in front of that, we can't control, they might drive up onto the grass or back clear up to the door. So in my opinion, however we do it, we need to budget for that. And I'd like to have a sidewalk straight out, not go clear down around, because if you're trying to go into that front door, people are going to cut a path through that brand-new sod there. So whether it's ADA, clear to the curb, I don't, we can, we can work that. But to me, I'd like to see more of what it would cost for us to, you know, finish it the way it's supposed to for our benefit and not, even though it has to be, it's going to butt up against our property. But parking right now is atrocious right in that front area. Are they going to parallel park? Are they going to diagonal park? Are they going to, you know, whatever it is? So to me, I think there's some issues that we're on the right track. I don't know how we're going to, again, having a cleaning deposit, which you're going to have to, that, we've got to work through that on the accounting, who handles that, the alcohol sales, if any. I think, to me, there's a, there's a lot more questions. I think, to me, there's a, there's a lot more questions. And it is a county building with the purposes of having you guys use it for fair purposes, according to the definition. But on the other hand, it just will be utilized by taxpayers of Downey. But I don't think we have all of the, I don't think we've got all the answers yet, in my opinion. But I do like the direction we're going. I like the dialogue. From your point of view, from our point of view, from Dan's point of view, I think, to me, it should be left underneath the overall maintenance of that building, just like you do other buildings, in case something needs to be fixed. So anyway, I probably opened up a whole big bucket, but I think we need to be really careful right now. Because we, you still have some work inside the building, right? A partial floor replacement?
A little warranty work, yeah.
So there is still some things, and, you know, that I think we can work out, but I think we need to be cautious.
Well, the main purpose of today's discussion was to share the intent of the board that we do want that to be used, and to start the dialogue of how to use it, what to do. So I would say at this point in time, and I'll likely speak here in a second, you guys create a plan of how you think you can manage that, what controls would be, blah, blah, blah. Talk to Dan, talk to Christie, work out processes and procedures, and then come back and we have a further discussion about refining that and moving forward. But I'm excited. I think it's, it's great.
No, I think that you guys have your fair board meeting, and that'd be part, on your agenda, as part of your discussion. So you get the full board. You've got some good board members that.
Oh, they're awesome.
Very active in the community and the area down there, so. And then just plain thank you. It was a wonderful fair. Thanks for everybody's work and time.
If possible, if we're looking at possibly a grant to help with the ADA, that might help, you know, even approach that for even that front sidewalk, which takes a little bit. But I think if we could actually include an ADA acceptable entrance, even on the front of that, and couple it with over there with your handicap accessibility into those, I think we're in a better position to probably look at an overall grant that would help that. We could use the city of Downey's cooperation. They've probably got leverage to some funds through CCOG, through some other place, as far as grant writing, that might, could help us.
We have a grant writer.
We have a grant writer here, but I just think if we're going to do this, let's see if we can tap into some grant money and follow through and make other places around it. I've watched people pushing wheelchairs through the gravel out there behind all of that. Which you're not going to, we can't pave it, but there could be some hotspots.
I'm not sure that we can't pave it. Honestly, I'm not sure that in the backside there, that we can't pave and put some handicap parking back there, which would give you better access than the trucks that'll come back there. I think that there's some things that we need to look at.
I do too.
Again, we run into that softball field.
Are you talking behind the building, pave back there? That'd be great. That'd be really nice.
It's pretty hard to push those wheelchairs through that big gravel, because I do myself to help people.
Even across grass.
Yeah.
Pushing lawn, pushing, they're terrible. But I just think we got a chance right now to look forward, to make it like it's supposed to. I think we're all on the same page there. But don't be afraid to broaden our scope of who could help us there. And if we're going to make it, you know, a showpiece for that area down there, and other events and venues wanting to use it, let's do it. Let's look in it wisely and see how it fits in. That's my observation.
And so we've got, which room is supposed to be the fair board office down there? Which one are you intending?
They're basically the same, but I thought that Jamie should be attached to the conference room, so she could run back and forth as, you know, she preps for meetings.
Okay.
I guess that would be the east office.
And some of the items that Dan would take care of in his budget, it's like what he does with all the other county buildings, is just make sure like the fire extinguishers are good, do the safety, the safety, help me.
We'll have, we'll have like alarm testing annually. We'll have a fire suppression test every year.
And then he can just have that on the same rotation as all of his other buildings, just to make sure they're all, I think that's a great idea, covered.
And can I say, we appreciate him so much and the job that he did down there. We really, really do.
But you can't have him.
You've got too many pictures to put.
I guess the question I've got, and I can, we'll come back to timing, and I had it right there, and then we applauded Dan and I lost it. Had to do with that building. Anyway, it comes back up, bring it back up. But there's just, there's so many issues we haven't thought about yet.
I've seen Dan more this week than I've seen him in four months.
Awesome, awesome. So with that, again, when your next board meeting, as Christian Moser talked about, maybe invite Dan, or talk to Christie beforehand, so your board can talk about controls and bring some ideas, and then we'll come back and have another discussion. But let the community know, be patient. We're working towards it. We want you to be able to use it, but we've got to do some things, put some things in place before we.
I think that's wise.
And then that kitchen is not an industrial kitchen. It's a warming kitchen. So if anybody's talking about Thanksgiving dinner, whatever, it's a warming kitchen. It's not a industrial kitchen.
Christie?
We found that out. Tuesday, we had talked about the storage containers down there.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to talk about that real quick?
Yeah, so we have three of them down there. Two of them had fair stuff in it, and one of them I was using for construction materials, but obviously I'm done with mine. I'd love to get rid of a couple of smaller ones. I don't know if the fair board was thinking about buying the big one, but I think it's like a pretty nice asset to have down there. But like the rest of us would rather want to keep paying for us, we'd like to get them out of there.
So I do think that we probably need to keep one of them. This is just my perspective. There is an old storage container that's next to the old shop, which is the items that we're going to talk about. So we've emptied it and put stuff in it. It's so old that the bottom's kind of rusted out, so it does get critters in there. There's cats that live in there and things like that. But anything metal or anything like that that we can hose off is perfectly great to store in that one. But I do think that for all the additional shelving and stuff that we have in the two that are across from the building, if we could move one of those over.
By the shop?
Yeah, by the shop, and put it up against the far fence. We could put the rest of the fair stuff in it. We could put the golf carts in it, which we stored in a barn last year. Just things, I think it would be very beneficial. I think it'd be good.
I agree.
I remember.
So if Dan can move forward with on how much it is going to be to buy that?
I remember the other point. I wrote it down, so I didn't, but since we have Alex here mower. Dan says that we do not have a, really a good enough mower to take care of that grass the way it should be taken care of. So where do we go from here? If, if we hire that out, contract it out, that's one option. The other one is to, in your guys' budget, or whatever it is, if we get a riding lawnmower of some sort that was designed to take care of that kind of grass, we need that thought through. Dan brought it up, and, you know, whether we want to take, get a mower and mow that correctly, or contract it out, that's a discussion that we need to further along the road.
Okay, so with that, we'll look at the items to dispose. Is there any questions or comments or concerns about any of this stuff?
No.
No. I'd entertain a motion then to authorize disposal.
I will make that motion to dispose of the items listed.
Okay, create a motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Can I ask a quick question on that? So the city of Downey's offered us, they have a, Alex can talk more about it, but they have a place where you can take all the metal stuff and all that. Are we okay to just do that, or do we need to actually get a roll-off and haul it off? And these little kids' chairs, we could probably give to like a daycare or something, because they're just, I have pictures, if you guys want to see them. They're just these little teeny orange. Or do we have to, when you say dispose of them, is it a roll-off and haul it away?
We have to take it to an auction. We can't just give it to people.
Okay.
With the city of Downey, we could work with them, because they are another entity. But like giving to daycare and stuff, we don't have the ability to do that.
Okay.
Okay, we have plenty.
So should we just give them a roll-off?
Go to an auction or to the landfill.
That would be the easiest.
Okay, I'll work with Dylan and I'll get them out.
Okay.
And I got the, I gave Christie a picture of everything, and there's only one that has the asset tag on it, one thing. And I did call about both photocopy machines. They don't even have them listed in their inventory anymore. They're old, really old.
Okay. All right, well, thank you again for your work, for a great fair. Appreciate you.
We'll start them next.
That's how it rolls, isn't it? Get a rest and gloat one night, and then you're back to work the next day, right?
But we love it.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tristan? Everyone, you've got to write stuff down.
I don't.
I know.
Tristan Borkman, Assistant Planning Director, and I have with me Elise Foster, the subdivision planner.
And Howard's not here because he's down with his father.
Yes, he's with his dad.
He's had a medical, not urgency, but a medical issue that required some family attention.
Yep. So we have before you today an update for our land use and development ordinance rewrite. So overall, our project intention with this is to combine all eight of our county ordinances that we currently have and consolidate them into one ordinance, so that we can provide more clarity, remove a bunch of the redundancies that we have within all of our ordinances, and then also to modernize regulations to current times, since all of our ordinances are from '98, and even some that are later, older than that. So for progress to date, right now, we have a consolidated draft. It is still in the very rough draft stage. However, you all do have a copy of that for your review. We just wanted to make sure that we're on the right track before we get any further, before we start doing any public workshops or getting public input of any kind. We did also send that rough draft to legal for review just this week, so that we can just make sure from a legal standpoint, we're covering everything in Idaho code, especially with some of the new regulations that went into effect July 1 of this year. And then for next steps, we are looking at creating a questionnaire that we can send out to everybody that's on the county mail, email list, as well as having workshops in person, both in South County and North County. And then just to get some input from the board, we are looking at some key considerations of, we did have a bunch of stuff going on with solar last year, and we did a whole rewrite of our ordinance for solar provisions. And we just wanted to ask you whether you want to consider energy provisions being put into the new ordinance. We have wind, energy, and nuclear provisions that we could potentially look at, if that's something that the board would like to consider.
Okay. Real quick, as I look at your ordinance drafting, I want to go back to your open space and community space real quick.
Yes.
How are you adjusting that, or what's your intention on adjusting that, or?
Yeah, so our intention currently is to have the open space, the way it is written now, to only be in areas where there's wildlife habitat or agricultural areas. Otherwise, we would have no open space requirements for any other areas of the county. Right now, we have a bunch of open space in North County, which just doesn't make a lot of sense. It turns into a bunch of weed patches, and nobody can do anything with it. So for areas like that, we're looking more towards community space, where it would be something that developers could opt into if they would like to, and that would give them the ability to increase density. So for example, if they chose to put in a community park, then they would have points associated with the community park, or dry lines, or a community well. That could give them maybe two or three more lots in addition to what the ordinance density would allow.
Great. I think that's fantastic, especially for those areas that are in the areas of city impact or right there to help facilitate that growth. So I like that. As far as the energy goes, I go back to our discussion with, which is a power company, I mean, Fall River.
Rocky Mountain.
Rocky Mountain, thank you. Idaho needs more energy, and I think it's foolish of us to exclude any energy. And I, and again, I've been talking with the folks at INL, and the modular reactors and stuff are coming online faster than we originally thought. So I, I think it's wise for us to have options for energy, additional energy provisions in this new thing going forward. So that is, that is my take.
And I think that we need an independent ordinance on this. I don't think it's a conglomeration or a conglomeration of, of all the other ordinances. I think it's such a, a large subject and specific to these, that I think it's a separate ordinance itself that, that we talk about where, what, and how.
Okay.
And I'm probably, my tendency is to agree. If we, my take is, if we try to make one recipe to fit everything in the world, we're going to have a ton of public wanting variants, wanting a conditional use permit. Overall, haven't really studied as much as I would like to. But I agree with some very particular things, including energy. They are so specific to things that aren't going to deal with subdivisions, they're not going to do that. They could, but there are so many things that I, even in that conference we were at in NACO, the ones that I attended, one of the biggest concerns almost with every county and every state is power. And partially because the AI and your data centers are taking over, basically, they're taking over all the consumption of power that cannot go to other places. So I think there's a lot of things out there. I don't think we're prepared for that. That's why, to me, right now, I'd like to do a separate ordinance that, for all, all energy. And, because I think we're going to be right in that as we go. There's going to be things coming up over the next five years that I don't know whether we can plan effectively enough for. And that scares the tar out of me. As far as all the other ordinances, they've been proven, they've been tested. This is an area. Plus, I think I would hate to delay a particular, any one ordinance, to wait till we all agree on a committee type of stuff. So if there's some specific ordinances, I'd like to stay focused on that one, on its own merits, and possible, able to move more fluidly than have to go through all the hearings all over the county. I think that's going to slow the process down. That's, that's my take.
Okay. Does that sound like a direction?
Yep, I think that makes sense. So we'll have the land use and development ordinance move through that process with public input, and then have a separate energy ordinance that we can work through, have separate workshops for that, public hearings, everything.
Yeah, I think you can do them concurrent.
Concurrent, but separate.
And when I read through what I could read through there, I think in the overall needs to refer to that by defining what's large scale, mid-scale, or whatever. I think those things are still applicable. How you define the difference between the different levels? Because if somebody's just putting a solar panel or a wind thing on their own particular property, I think that can be addressed. I think we're talking more in more commercial grade, industrial grade. I think that are so specific, that I think it will calm, it'll calm some fears if we address what we can with that one.
So basically, if, in my head, just structurally working through this, you'd go through the main land use plan, and then you'd say, when it comes to the energy ordinance, you'd say C section, appendix A, B, and C for the different ones.
Or ordinance such.
Yeah, ordinance A, B, and C for the various ones independently.
Okay.
Is that, is that the correct way?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Because I think we are getting a little behind on some other counties that have already moved forward, which is a good carrot for somebody to move to a county besides ours. And like I say, after Rocky Mountain Power come in and said what they did about our needs and possible access points and whatever, I, I think that's getting, the state of Idaho needs to be on notice that we're behind on doing that, which also puts many counties behind. So I choose not to do that.
But I do want to tell you how appreciative I am of all the work that's gone into it so far. You had spent a heavy lift, and I know you've spent a lot of hours getting just to this point, so thank you for your efforts. And I think your timeline is acceptable. I think if you can hit that, that would be fantastic, so. Any other thoughts or discussions?
Nope.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Christie Klauser.
Mr. Klauser, calm for work. The first item I have for the board is a discussion of, Adam and I were talking, and due to his generosity and needs that have arisen, his budget may potentially be over by about $15,000 in the IT department. And that is a little bit of extra, just in, if something comes up. So our ask is to see if we can allocate up to $15,000 of contingency for potential overages.
Yeah, Adam McKinney, Chief Technical Officer. This year, some price changes have happened, we've added a lot of stuff, new buildings, new equipment, we've added new Office 365 subscriptions, and then as Christie mentioned, my department's just helpful, we like to help other departments out, we've purchased laptop equipment, switching equipment, gear, and we're just at the point where we're gonna run a little shy, it's the first time in four-plus years of my budget that, and I've always decreased the budgets year over year, as you know, that we're coming a little shy. And I did, I did address that in next year's budget, as you saw, I, I, we've lost a position as well, so we're just a little short this year, and I just don't wanna run out completely, so. My other budget is gonna turn back nearly $50,000, though, so if that helps to offset some of that.
That'll, that'll slow down the public caning then, so.
Perfect, perfect.
And with that, I, I kinda, is $15,000 enough? And why I-
It's actually more than I asked for, I, I'd actually only asked for about $8,000, but we wanna make sure there's enough.
With the event center and finishing up there, I don't know about all the cameras and all this stuff.
Most of that money should be somewhere else, but I wanted to give a cushion.
YDC, I, the same thing up there, with cameras and getting everything, even computers, making sure we're all good. I just, I just wanna make sure that, if we need to add a little, let's add it now instead of coming back again for $5,000 later.
Yeah, no, that would be plenty.
And right now, we have budgeted $200,000 in contingency. $86,000 was used for the tractor for the event center. $8,500 was approved for planning and zoning to have the furniture, and then this, if this 15 was allowed, that would put us at about $109,000 of the 200 that's available.
Couple months left.
Yes. And I don't believe we have any other departments that are in jeopardy of being over budget, but again, I'll just continue to monitor.
Okay.
I'd go ahead, make a motion that we allow up to $15,000 to be expended by IT to catch up on a budget that they're over.
Not yet, we're not over yet.
We're not over yet. We're, we're generally-
As precautionary measure.
Yes. All right, any further discussion? No, good, bye. Okay, all right, all, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks. Yep, perfect timing.
I have, may require executives.
Well, I was gonna ask, you were supposed to do a bid opening at 10.
Okay.
Do you wanna, are you okay to wait till that? Okay, so we'll do that. So real quickly, we can take care of the consent agenda. Is there any issues, comments, questions, or concerns on the claims agenda?
Did you wanna make a comment on that one invoice?
Oh, yes, um, there is one invoice that needs your signature, it is for the tractor that I just mentioned. While you were, you three were at Naco, there was a last minute push to get that invoice paid, because while it was approved, we actually didn't have the invoice yet. When I coded it, I accidentally coded it to PIL, so I need your three signatures on that invoice, so that I can formally pay it out of contingency, because contingency does require the majority, well, all present to utilize those funds.
Okay.
And on this one, I just had a couple of questions. One was that in, we're paying September's, I'm calling Nurse, ahead of time, and I-
Oh, for the jails.
That is, that is a general practice for them. And then the other one was, this is a family member of the person that purchased, we've had conversation with this individual, have nepotism and purchasing from family, and so I think that's taken care of.
Yeah, that will not occur again.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
No, I'll make the motion, we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, you have a motion, all in favor, say aye. 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 And we'll stand at recess while we get ready to do the bid.